I'll just ask that as we get started that anybody participating in this hearing to just please have your cameras on. Due to it being a virtual hearing, welcome to the Rules and Oversight Committee. We are resuming our hearing from last week that was postponed due to the data we requested and the Health Commissioner both not being present. This hearing topic is the COVID vaccine rollout. Due to time constraints and the fact that the Health Committee will be hosting a broader COVID hearing next month. We will be sticking only to this specific topic. To the Health Commissioner, I am deeply disappointed that I found out minutes before last hearing that you weren't going to be present. And that the slide deck did not include the data I had requested. Furthermore, for this hearing that despite the delay in hearing from last week to this week. I only received partial data and the few cases that. If only partial data from what was requested and also I only received it late last night. This committee and the City Council has the duty to the citizens of Baltimore to ensure that their government is working for them. I've no doubt that your team is working hard and for that we appreciate it. However, the numbers are clear that we are far behind the state's vaccination vaccination averages. And a lot of our neighborhood neighboring jurisdictions such as Baltimore County are far ahead of us. This is very concerning considering that we had more mass vaccination sites, hospitals, pharmacies. And external partners vaccinating than any other jurisdiction in Maryland. And so due to the time constraints, we'll start with with some questions and then we'll get into the presentation and public testimony. So the first question that I have is why are our numbers lagging behind the state's average? And majority of jurisdictions in Maryland and what are we doing to address this?
Great. Thank you, Chair Sliper, and thank you to the fellow committee members that have joined us today. I'll first start by saying I am very proud of the work that the Health Department has done in conjunction with our partners to vaccinate residents here in Baltimore City. We have many clinical partners across the city. We work with community-based organizations, dozens of volunteers, our value ambassadors and city school as well as other city agencies. I think it's really impossible to discuss the difference in vaccination rates here in Baltimore compared to the state or other jurisdictions. Without addressing the significant disparities that exist because of structural racism. Poverty and the historical practices of exclusion here in our city. So I think we have to consider our vaccination rates in the context of what we call the social determinants of health. So this is essentially environment in which we live, work, worship, grow and play. So the social determinants of health affecting residents here in Baltimore City are unique and they vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. Baltimore City is a city that is 60% black, a city where one in three children live below the poverty line. A city where about 30% of our households earn less than $25,000 a year. And I would guess that everyone on this call has heard the staggering statistic. That life expectancy in the city can differ by about 20 years depending on the zip code that you are born into. Income, poverty and race have an enormous impact on health outcomes across Baltimore. And the Health Department designed a vaccine dissemination strategy and campaign that addresses that head on. We knew we would get to the point in our efforts where mass vaccination clinics would not be enough. Especially when it comes to reaching our populations that were in highest need. We knew that we would have to shift to a ground game that focuses on door-to-door outreach. And is led by our value ambassadors with support from many community partners and the mayor's office of neighborhoods. So though vaccination rates have slowed in Baltimore City, just as they have slowed everywhere across the country. I'm proud to say that we consistently rank among the top three or four counties in the state. In terms of the delta of new residents receiving vaccinations each week. So Baltimore City is unique. It's unlike any other jurisdiction in Maryland. It's a large densely populated urban and majority black city. We have some of the highest rates of comorbidities and one of the highest social vulnerability indexes within the state of Maryland. So I'm excited about our progress to date and I'm very proud of the work that our team has done. And I look forward to talking more about that work in my presentation.
So just to answer the question, so you're okay with where we stand today with our numbers compared to the other jurisdictions?
Absolutely. As I mentioned, you can't really compare Baltimore to the other jurisdictions. There are some very key differences in the population that we serve here in the city when we look at other jurisdictions across the state.
Gotcha. So to my second question and one of the points you just brought up, which I think is hits the nail on the head. Is regarding neighborhood by neighborhood, there's a lot of different challenges and different messaging based on the neighborhood you're in. There's different hesitancies. I see that even in my district based on what neighborhood I'm in, there's different hesitancies, there's different questions that come up. And so neighborhood data is certainly extremely important to this conversation and to make sure that. At this point, you know, we're six months later from our previous hearing. That we reassess and we're seeing where we need to go and how our messaging and efforts need a shift. Which is the purpose of this hearing. And so I had been told by your staff on countless occasions. That neighborhood data would be made public and would end up on the website. Zooming into last week, some information was discussed with me. And that information included. You know, just a very widespread of percentage points by neighborhood. So. You say you guys have sent to myself in writing that neighborhood data is now not allowed to be made public. Without permission from the state. Is the mayor allowed to see that information?
I brief the mayor weekly and at times I do pull up a CSA map. I share it visually. So that he can see and he can see again where there are areas that that may be struggling more around vaccination rates.
So so he's allowed to see the neighborhood by neighborhood data?
We share it again during that talk. He doesn't necessarily get a paper copy, but we do walk through different neighborhoods. Yes.
So is there a reason why the City Council and council members don't have that same luxury to see the numbers of their districts?
By neighborhood? Again, I think it's if there's a difference between sharing broadly publicly as well as sharing again for on an individual basis. So again, we we look internally at CSA level data and that's a different data set. So I think we are happy to have individual meetings with council members and I know we've provided information to council members. On specific data points for their particular jurisdictions.
Okay, so I've requested that on numerous occasions with members of the mayor's office on the phone. To be able to not necessarily be sent the data, but just show me, just show me the neighborhood by neighborhood or even tell it to me. Without sending me anything, just informing me. So I know because I'm extremely active on vaccines as hopefully you know by now. And I spend most of the hours of most days on this topic. And I have been denied at every turn. So am I as a council member entitled to see that same information?
So again, I think we're happy to walk through your jurisdiction. We are not able to share aggregate CSA level data.
So I can see the same information from my district as the mayor sees for the city?
So I'd like to confer with MDH since it's their data, but I would like to think so.
Okay. Who do you guys currently share that data with?
So again, CSA level data is very different from zip code data. We look at that data internally as we're planning our mobile vaccination clinics. We don't even necessarily share that with our clinical partners. We direct them to particular areas based on an internal review of that CSA level data.
So only internal within the Health Department are people seeing that community by community level data?
That is correct.
So it has not been sent or shared from members of your staff to any community partners? Or or anybody else who is outside of the Health Department?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if that and if that has has occurred, which it has. What what should we be doing? Is that something that we need to be referring to the inspector general? Is that something that is just a policy or is that something that is actually like confidential medical information? I mean, what what is that data considered?
So again, let us know. So report it to the Health Department or I'd like to know who's who shared that data.
Gotcha. Okay. Those that'll conclude my first two questions. I'm going to go to other members of the council. But just for your information, if you're not aware. That your staff was willing to put this information online. Included only that they were allowed to share a 30-point spread. So if a neighborhood. You just pick ABC neighborhood that they're 50 to 80% vaccinated or 51 to 80% vaccinated. And they said that was okay. But zeroing in and closing that gap to maybe a 10-point spread was was not okay. So that was something that the state, the state told you is not allowed to be released?
And so you're saying per zip code or per CSA?
Per community. I'm not, zip code data is online. I'm talking about the neighborhood data.
Yes, that's correct.
So the state said we can only put on neighborhood data if there's a 30-point spread?
As far as I know, that is correct. Yeah. So we we can share the data similar to what's on our map. And actually on the map that we have online, if you scroll over a particular zip code, it will tell you the exact percent and not just the range.
Okay, I'm going to come back to this. Next person on my screen is Councilman Costello. No questions. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Serat Drazza for your hard work and the hard work of your team as the pandemic continues to rage on. The question I had was more around, I mean, I'm very keenly aware of issues with. Island in my district and there was a resident there who only got the vaccine at the clinic because one of her neighbors had.
I'm losing you a bit on sound, Councilmember Burnett.
Yeah, Councilmember Burnett, do you want to turn off your camera while you're speaking, while you ask your question, just so that it's using less bandwidth?
Am I coming in now?
Yes. Try again.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. You all. So yeah, I don't know if you're cut off, so I'll just start from the beginning. Thank you all again for the opportunity. Wanted to to ask or guess some of the strategies around communicating with some of the more hard-to-reach populations. I guess some of the the strategy there. We had a clinic that was run by University of Maryland in my district. Over the weekend, it was like a back-to-school kind of thing. And there was a lady getting who just got vaccinated. But only did it because a neighbor of hers happened to be picking up a book bag at the event and kind of talked her into it. And that I guess that sort of personal connection and trusted messenger was pretty much the only reason she did it. How are you all, I guess, trying to tap into, you know, those sort of like community-based folks, community-based leaders? Trusted messengers and that, you know, reside in communities that are under vaccinated. But obviously, you know, may have additional questions or hesitancy or just may need that neighbor or pastor to to talk to them.
Yeah, so early on, we identified what we coined as value communities. So to your point, those communities that might be harder to reach. For varying reasons. And we have assigned value leads for each of those respective communities that I'll go into more during the presentation. As a part of that program, we've hired what we call value ambassadors. So these are community members. Focused on supporting those particular value communities and they provide vaccination education and outreach. Including helping to identify upcoming clinics for their for their neighbors or for their peers. As you know, right, we know that a lot of times a message is received differently if it's from a peer or a trusted pastor. Within the community. And so we've been working also with the faith community as as another example. But also working with community-based organizations. We established a micro grants program for community-based organizations, which is run through Civic Works. And to provide community-based organizations with funding to do vaccination outreach and to host their own vaccination clinics. So again, I'll be talking about that program a little bit, but we've to date awarded 12, we've had 12 awardees so far. Again, to support ongoing efforts by community-based organizations to to do the work.
Awesome. Okay, and I'll I may have follow-up after the presentation. The second question I had was, I guess, just walking us through. Or at least for the public, the sort of logistics of a community-based clinic. Because I know it's very different than the early days of vaccine distribution at the convention center and other more, you know, institutional environments. Can you walk us through, I guess, what that all entails as well and I guess the outreach components, you know, to draw people to it?
Absolutely. I mean, I think you you certainly hit the nail on the head, right? Like mass vaccination sites were very different, right? Those were generally people who who wanted to get vaccinated. They they knew they wanted to get vaccinated before vaccine was even available. They they, you know, provided, you know, large-scale vaccination efforts. So a couple hundred vaccines occurring per day. The community-based efforts are very different. So I mentioned, you know, we've kind of coined this term the ground game. These efforts require significant outreach and neighborhood or community canvassing ahead of them. Sometimes weeks in advance, again, to kind of build up that interest to ensure that we're going to have the community come out. This is done again by our value ambassadors. The mayor's office of neighborhood has been extremely supportive as well. We identify community partners who are well-respected in the within that community that serve them. We conduct a site visit to that location that we're planning to do vaccinations. We have to ensure that it's ADA accessible. We have logistics and operations planning team, again, that focuses on making sure that the day of. Everything is in place to be able to successfully, you know, pull off events. This includes appropriate tables, appropriate clinical support. Ability to socially distance depending on the location. And so that all has to happen. We also do kind of day of event outreach again. After we've already done that pre-event canvassing and outreach, again, just to ensure that that appropriate turnout for an event.
Got it. Okay. And I'll hold my other questions, Mr. Chair, for the after presentation. Thank you. And I'll try to get my internet together in the interim.
No problem. Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Drazza. I know your office has been working with my office very closely. We've been, Civic Works is in my district, so we've been working very closely with them and we've gotten vaccine clinics at our schools. As well to during their back-to-school activities. So that has been very helpful. My question is around. Have your, has your office been considering vaccine mandates? Because I'm worried. With this Delta variant and the level of hesitancy. I personally don't think that, I mean, getting the vaccine unless you're a, you have. A medical condition that doesn't allow people to have the vaccine, I think everybody should have the vaccine because we would end this earlier. So I'm wondering if, you know, your office and the mayor's office has been considering this. And also advocating for vaccine mandates, particularly as we, you know, get into the schools. And I've done my, I think you've heard the stories of my advocacy at the state level also to try to get this done. So I'm just curious about whether or not we're moving closer to vaccine mandates.
Yeah, there is active discussion within the mayor's office around what a vaccine mandate would look like potentially for city employees. So I would defer to them. That that question actually came up during the the earlier hearing as well. So I believe Nina is already following up on that. You know, certainly you mentioned schools and I meet with schools on a weekly basis. And and their latest report to me was that close to 80% of their teachers are actually vaccinated. This is via self-report. And schools has already had a program in place that involves pool testing. For unvaccinated staff as well as students and they will continue that throughout the fall to potentially identify cases and individuals who are unvaccinated.
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm not on the committee earlier, so sorry about that. But I I think we need to get drastic here and actually do mandates. And I'll, you know, we'll continue to advocate on the state level. That through MICO and other places to try to get, you know, some of that as well. And then my second question is around, again, sort of this, I think all of us have been asking you questions about on-the-ground work. And I and I think that, again, I've been working with your team and we, our office has been, you know, doing as much as we can in our in our district. It would be great to, if there's, I know with HIPAA, it's very hard to have that, you know, neighborhood level data. But it would be helpful to understand where our hotspots are a little bit better because 21218 is a hotspot, but it's a humongous zip code. And so and even the CSAs aren't that level that we need. So just sort of backing up what the chairman was saying. You know, if there's any way to, whether it's even private with us, you know, where we don't even distribute that information. Would be very helpful for us from a strategic standpoint. So I don't know if you've had any more conversations with that, just just backing up the chairman on that.
Yep, understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doc, thanks for everything the Health Department and you are doing. A couple of quick questions. One, on the topic of the mandate for city employees, where are we at on that? Is that something that that is going to happen, can happen, under discussion, et cetera?
So I know it's under discussion. I would defer to Nina in the mayor's office for a more definitive answer.
Is that, so is that something that you've recommended? To the mayor?
Yes, the recommendation has been made. Again, I think the the mayor's office is actively reviewing.
Got it, got it. But you you've made the recommendation that should have a mandate for all city employees, correct?
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you. And then the other thing is, just in terms of. Getting the vaccination numbers up, have we considered a cash incentive?
So we do have some other incentives and I'm thinking more around the community-based vaccinations. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I'm just thinking like in in neighborhoods where we have or zip codes where we have lower. A lower percentage of vaccinated residents. Have we considered doing a cash incentive to get individuals in those neighborhoods vaccinated?
Yeah, so I think that, and I want to thank you, Council, Councilman Costello, because you sit on our Health and Business Roundtable. Which has been meeting since August of last year, actually. And I know that among that group, we've had some discussions around more business incentives. The cash incentives are, when we've done focus grouping, what we hear from people generally is maybe they want gift cards or they want, you know, grocery cards. I don't know that we've heard as much specifically about the cash incentives, though I certainly, you know, understand that as a as a potential incentive. We've looked more into some of the other options. Can they get a discount at local businesses? You know, can they get swag for free or that type of thing? Probably more than we've actually looked at the cash incentives.
Um, I I would respectfully recommend for your consideration exploring cash incentives, knowing that. You know, there's a significant percentage of the population in the city that's not bankable for many of the reasons that you discussed at the beginning of today's hearing. I believe would be receptive to, you know, $100 cash to to get a shot or whatever it is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback.
Yep, thanks, Doc. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just want to ask one follow-up question, but I also have a laundry list here from colleagues who have, who are not able to make it to the hearing. So I'm going to try to jump back and forth and include some of their questions. So I apologize if. You know, it's a little out of order or there's some questions that have already been partially answered. But just before I get to that, just want to circle back. Who in the state Health Department is requiring us that any community-level data that we release to only be accurate within a 30-point spread?
So we work with David Blythe, who is the chief epidemiologist at the Health Department. He is my point of contact there at the Health Department. I know our team probably worked with other epidemiologists on the team as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm going to jump to one of these questions. Okay, which actually is in line with with your opening remarks. Hold on a second. And okay, in Baltimore County, there is a 2% spread between the percentage of black residents and white residents. Who have been of the population being vaccinated. On the state, there is a 6% spread and in Baltimore City, there is an 18-point spread. So can you just elaborate on why Baltimore City has such a far larger spread whereas these other jurisdictions do not?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, as you mentioned, this kind of goes back to some of the opening statements that our population is different. And so we have employed tactics that specifically focus on African-Americans. When I get to the presentation, one of my slides actually discusses some of the disparities we saw early on between black and white vaccination rates. And how we we have seen that gap close a bit and how we have also seen increased interest and increased vaccination uptake in African-Americans. Especially in recent weeks, when you actually look at our total numbers, the total number of African-Americans that have been vaccinated actually far outnumbered that of of white residents here in Baltimore City. So to date, African-Americans have received about 48% of all vaccinations provided. So. I I get that, but because of, I think, our population is 60% black, it kind of makes the spread look a little bit different. But but we'll be certainly reviewing that on that slide.
Okay, just for the record, the spread is based on percentage of population. So. But anyways, the next question I have here is how many employees do you have doing contact tracing?
Oh, that's a great question. I would actually want to ensure that that number is accurate. When we first started, we actually pulled a number of individuals, and this is March of 2020 when we first started. From across the department as well as outside partners to support contact tracing since it was an extremely small team. In May of 2020, we launched the Baltimore Health Corps Program, which involved hiring over 200 individuals. With the focus on workforce development for communities that have been hardest hit by COVID and included building up our contact tracing workforce. So I want to give an exact number. So we can definitely take that question back to get you an exact number.
Okay, I'll just. Okay, but you said it's over 200?
Yes, we hired 200 additional support staff through the Baltimore Healthcare Program from that launched in May-June of 2020.
Sure. Okay, and how many are doing, how many people do you have doing vaccinations on a weekly basis?
Oh, again, I would want to get the specific number for you. We do have a number of usually about a couple dozen, maybe 20 to 25 vaccination. Mobile vaccination clinics per week. We are often working with other clinical providers to support those as well as. We have vendors that are supporting those efforts as well. So again, it will vary based on a number of particular clinics per week. But we can certainly give you maybe an average per week. We can come back with that.
Okay, and in line with these questions, I'm just reading through them. How many people are doing outreach from the Health Department?
Yeah, so we hired close to 70 value ambassadors. Again, we we work closely with community-based organizations. We also work with the mayor's office of neighborhoods. I hope I hope what folks are getting is that this is a collective collaborative effort. And that the Health Department is is working with and leveraging the existing resources that exist within the community to do. A lot of that vaccination outreach and education. But we can certainly, you know, get the specific number of folks within the Health Department. We can get that back to you.
Okay, thank you. And how many people are doing enforcement?
Again, I can get back to you on a specific number. So we do have our environmental health staff that have been doing, and I assume this is compliance checks around. The mask order. I assume that's what that's in reference to.
I assume so.
Yeah, so we can we can get back to with a specific number on that.
Okay. I mean, colleagues, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep reading through these questions. So if you have a question, please raise your hand. How many community partners are there that the Health Department is present for their clinics? So not just people who you're doing outreach with or anything like that, but ones that there's actually clinics and the Health Department employees are on site for?
I can get back to you on a specific number. I do outline a number of those community partners within our presentation, but it's variable. So for example, one example I'll give is a couple of weeks ago, we had a clinic that was supported by black Greek organizations. So there are about nine black Greek organizations. So it might be a mix of those community partners present. We've also done events with our faith leaders and so it'll it'll be variable depending on the type of event. But we can certainly get back to you with with more specifics on an exact number.
If you can do that. And so this actually is in line with something I had emailed you guys about with a request. And you guys didn't send the information. And so I replied to that email. Hopefully that will also, I'll just make it a committed request as well. On how many vaccines each of these partners have done. And not asking about how many each pharmacy or each hospital has done strictly the Health Department partners. What I, what I would consider, unless you correct me otherwise, is that. The partners are the ones that when you guys put out your map of, you know, your calendar of all the different vaccine clinics that are going on. I assume you guys are playing a role in each one of those clinics. So those ones that are on that calendar to also provide the list of of who they are and how many. So those ones that are on that calendar to also provide the list of who they are and how many they have done. Is that correct? All the ones on the calendar are partnered organizations with you?
So there is a map that we will provide that shows a list of those clinics. You know, we can, again, I think, get back, I saw that you, maybe right before this started, I saw that you responded asking for additional information. So we can certainly try to best answer that as best as possible, so.
Okay. How many, what's your capacity for homebound visits per day?
Yeah, so again, that is variable. So homebound partnerships also exist. So we've worked with Lutherville Pharmacy, LifeBridge, Becore Shalom has supported that, the Fire Department as well, and so it depends. Part of what happens with homebound visits is that we, when we open a vial of vaccine, for example, if there are 10 doses, we certainly want to ensure that we're able to get to at least 10 individuals on that day so as not to waste a dose. But that capacity is variable based on our partners. So again, we aim to at least do 10 vaccinations per day so that we're kind of, you know, not wasting any in a particular vial. We do have support as well from the National Guard, I forgot to shout out, and they're sending out teams about three times a week.
So at least 10 per day. How many people are on this list right now?
That I would have to get back to you on. I do provide the total number that we vaccinated to date in the presentation, but I would have to get back to you on what might be outstanding on the list.
Yeah, I mean, as far as these questions are concerned, I mean, there's a strong marketing campaign that you guys are doing now regarding homebound vaccinations. And I know from the first round of vaccinations, just from constituents calling and asking when they'll be vaccinated or when somebody's going to come and visit them, mostly they were seniors who called every single day at the same time. And so they wanted to know when they were going to be vaccinated, and there was a backlog, and it took a long time for that to get done. When I see this new marketing campaign, I'm encouraged because I know how important homebound vaccines are, but I'm also concerned if we have a small capacity that we can't actually meet that demand like we did originally. I just want to get ahead of that. So, I mean, 10 per day seems low, but I guess it's another committee request is to just provide how many people are on that list.
Yeah, so at least 10 per day. So I think, again, just not wanting to, you know, open a vial that might be wasted. And I would say since we first started doing homebound vaccinations, we have expanded our partner list, again, thanks to many partners who are supporting, like Becore Shalom, so that we do have more efficiency and capacity than we had, you know, in weeks prior.
Okay, do we have any issues right now getting the vaccines that we need to meet our current demands?
No.
Okay, at the last hearing, there was, there was 18,000 older adults that pre-registered for a vaccine. Has every single one of them who were on that pre-registration link been, received a vaccine?
We went through that entire pre-registration league. Either we called them or we referred them out to partners to ensure that they would be vaccinated. So yes, we have gone through that entire list, which I think by all, by time all was said and done, it was above 21,000, yeah.
Okay, so there's nobody left waiting on that list who's called?
No.
And also, at the last hearing, you said our goal was 80% of the population by 2022, which seems pretty far out, but is that still our goal and are we on pace to reach that goal?
That is, and I provided benchmarks in the presentation. We had a benchmark for August 31st, and so I was planning to go through a few of those, but yes. I think some of that also, again, is that 80% refers to the total population, includes when vaccinations will be approved for children under 12 because they were included in that 80% number.
Okay. All right, colleagues, do you have any questions before we move into the presentation? Seeing none, you can put the presentation up on the screen. Richard, if you can help the Health Department get that on the screen, please.
Mr. Chair, we already elevated the Commissioner to, there we go.
Okay, excellent. Commissioner, you can begin when you're ready.
Will do. Give me one moment, let me get to. All right, are we good to see my screen?
Yes.
We can see it, Doc, whenever you're ready.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good afternoon, everybody. As mentioned, my name is Letitia Drazza, and I'm the Health Commissioner for Baltimore City. Thank you to Chair Schleifer and the other committee members just for this opportunity to provide updates on the city's vaccination efforts. I also just want to take a moment to thank my outstanding team, a couple of whom have hopped on the call today. They have been in this response since January of 2020. Many have sacrificed time with their families, time with their loved ones, their own health just to be present and to give 110% every single day, so I thank them. I do want to give just a special shout out to Dr. Kendra McDowell, the Chief Medical Officer of the Baltimore City Health Department, who was really instrumental in helping to spearhead our equitable approach to city vaccinations. I also want to thank Dr. Amanda Smith, one of our epidemiologists, who really helped pull together a lot of the data that I'm presenting here on today's talk. All right, so this is just my disclaimer slide, including that essentially data presented here is updated and accurate as of August 16th. So there may be some additional updates in future iterations of this. Very briefly walking through our agenda, I will talk quickly about our vaccination data. Much of this can be found on our vaccination dashboard. I'll also spend some time reviewing our overall campaign and approach. I'd like to spend some time discussing our efforts to address vaccine hesitancy or deliberation among different communities throughout the city. And lastly, I'd like to spend some time talking about some of our clinical and community partnerships. So starting with a snapshot of our vaccination dashboard. Again, this information can be accessed on our website at coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov by clicking on COVID-19 vaccine information on the main menu and then selecting Baltimore City Vaccination Dashboard. To begin, as you can see, over 308,000 residents above the age of 18 have received at least a first or a single dose. That accounts for about 65% of our adult population. The middle top line graph on here represents the cumulative number of residents that have received a vaccine since vaccine administration began. The lower bar graphs provide a representation of the total number of vaccines by age and the percentage of vaccination by age as well. As you can see, over 76% of our seniors are those over the age of 60 have received a first or a single dose of vaccine. And the map in the corner provides a visual context of vaccination rates across the city. And I will spend a little bit of time walking through that in an upcoming slide. So recently, we added this line graph, and this is what I was referencing when I talked about the disparities among black and white residents. So this is intended to provide a visual reflecting the differences in vaccination rates among blacks and whites, where the gray line represent vaccination rates for whites, while the purple line represents vaccination rates for African-Americans. African-Americans, we know, are the majority population here in the city, and they do have the highest overall number of people vaccinated, a little over 145,000 of African-Americans having received their first, their first or single dose, and that's about 48% of first doses being admitted to African-Americans here in the city. Over the past three months, we are seeing a bit of an increase in the percentage of African-American population that's being vaccinated. And you can see that the, a little bit more leveling off of the gray line and a slight more uptick in the purple line. So again, looking a bit at the map, so this map provides information on vaccination.
Dr. Drazza, I didn't see Hispanic community there in that, in that, are you going to talk about that later?
Thank you for pointing out that out, Councilwoman Ramos. I do not go into detail, but we have had a lot of internal discussion about ensuring that we're including other populations. And so we literally had a discussion about this yesterday on an internal call. We want to make sure that we're representing other communities, so I appreciate you for bringing that up. One thing I will say is that our Latinx population actually outpaces the rest of the population, our non-Latinx population in terms of percentage of those vaccinated. So that is something that we have seen, but you're right, we should be representing that on the dashboard, and we just had some more internal discussion about how best to do that.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
No, no, not a problem. So this map here provides information on vaccination coverage by zip code throughout the city. As the legend indicates, the darker purple, the darkest purple, really represents the highest vaccination coverage areas, while the lightest colors, specifically the light gray, represents the lowest vaccination coverage by area. And we, again, look at this data internally as we're planning out vaccination clinics. So shifting gears a bit to talk more about efforts that are either supported by the Health Department or run by the Health Department. As of August 8th, the Health Department had 735 total clinics, and this includes our mass vaccination pods at Under Armour and BCCC early on as well as vaccination efforts at our Eastside Clinic. Through these efforts, we've administered over 53,000 vaccinations, again, just through our Health Department and Health Department-involved clinics. So as of August 10th, there have been a little over 584,000 total doses administered to city residents. So our clinics account for a little less than 10% of total doses. And I think this just highlights how much of a collective effort vaccinating for city residents has been. The map on the left actually provides a representation of all of the locations of clinics that have either been supported by the Health Department or run by the Health Department. And of note, not all the clinics that have occurred are represented here. These are just the ones specific to the Health Department. And this also doesn't represent other, some of our other efforts, such as vaccination efforts at homeless encampment sites, for example. So as I mentioned, the focus of our mobile vaccination clinics have largely been in areas with the lowest vaccination coverage. So this chart just represents the total number of COVID vaccines, vaccine clinics that have been held by the Health Department or that we've worked with a clinical partner on and zip codes with less than 40% vaccination coverage. So I've mentioned our partners a lot, and I think I've done that because it's extremely important. We could not do this work without partners. And this has been true, this was true of our testing efforts, and it's certainly been true of our vaccination efforts as well. And this landscape is very broad, right? So we have partners, you know, within the Mayor's Office, Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, who help with canvassing. We have worked with local academic institutions, Coppin State and Notre Dame School of Pharmacy to support providing people to give vaccinations at some of our clinics. We've also had support from local pharmacies like Lutherville Pharmacy, Rite Aid, Northern Pharmacy, and Safeway. From day one, we've partnered with hospitals, this includes LifeBridge, University of Maryland Medical System, Johns Hopkins, MedStar, St. Agnes, and Mercy. I'd also like to recognize a few of our community-based organizations. Again, could not do this work without them, but Cor Shalom and the NAACP, who've run their own vaccination clinics and help with outreach effort. I do want to thank other city agencies, FIRE, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods. I want to similarly acknowledge the outstanding work of our federally qualified health centers and really many of them vaccinating patients on their rosters and beyond. JI Medical, Park West, Total Healthcare, Family Health Centers of Baltimore, Healthcare for the Homeless, and Baltimore Medical System. So through these partnerships, we have been able to provide homebound vaccinations. Again, this is a multi-partnership effort, including FIRE, including Becore Shalom, LifeBridge, Lutherville Pharmacy, the National Guard, and University of Maryland has recently signed on University of Maryland as a recent partner to join these efforts. To date, 408 homebound or mobility limited residents and their caregivers have been vaccinated through these efforts. FIRE, along with the Health Department and National Guard team, have vaccinated about 223 of those residents. We've referred 221 residents to Lutherville Pharmacy and 96 residents to the LifeBridge Becore Shalom team. I don't think I've mentioned yet, but there are certainly multiple ways that individuals can sign up to receive homebound vaccinations. I think the chair mentioned our online campaign, but for individuals without access, they can also call and schedule a visit at 443-984-8650 or register online if you have access to internet at covax.baltimorecity.gov. For those individuals that we are finding a harder time to reach, we are working with Civic Works to identify and locate those individuals that are not connected to services. So what we knew early on when we developed our plan around equitable vaccination dissemination was that removing barriers was going to be fundamental to our success. And many of our sites have done just that. So this includes expanding their hours to include nights and weekends, establishing semi-permanent locations that have predictable hours of availability, again, running about 20 to 25 vaccination clinics per week, improving access. So we want to make sure that these are in high-foot traffic areas, supporting workplace vaccination clinics. We've held a number of clinics for city employees. And then co-locating many of our vaccination events with established community events. So again, residents would already be present and can easily get that vaccine that same day. Additionally, we are advertising free transportation. So we have partnered with the company that provides free transportation to vaccination events, and it doesn't have to be a city-supported event. It can be any vaccination event. So again, for that, residents can call 410-372-3444. And lastly, as I mentioned before, bringing the vaccine directly to homebound and mobility limited residents and their caregivers. So shifting gears a bit, we began talking about this during the question portion, but I did want to provide some updates on where the city is with respect to our long-term goal of 80% of city residents being vaccinated by February 2022, inclusive of children. So our upcoming benchmark, our next benchmark, is scheduled for August 31st, and this indicated at least 40% of the population being fully vaccinated. Again, if I'm, when I say the population, I'm referring to both adults and children. So if you recall, during that previous hearing, we were very cognizant that we would have to shift from the mass vaccination sites to a more community-based approach in order to reach this goal. We've recently fully vaccinated about 286 residents, and I say "we" collectively, the city has about 286 residents that have been vaccinated, surpassing this goal of vaccinating 40% of the entire population. We're now at about 48% of the entire city population being fully vaccinated. Breaking that goal down a bit further and looking at specific groups, as I mentioned, when we look at the total population, we have surpassed that initial goal of 40% of all the population being fully vaccinated. When we look more closely at the African-American population, we're at about 89%, so hedging closer towards that goal. When we look at the Latinx population, we have surpassed that goal. When we look at older adults, we have also surpassed that goal as well. When we look at children, and children specifically 12 to 17 years of age, knowing that they're the only ones currently eligible, we're at about 78% of reaching that goal. I do, again, want to look a little bit more closely at children since they're the ones who've most recently become eligible for the vaccine. And just noting that as of August 16th, about 38%, actually, I'm sorry, about 40% of all children between the ages of 12 to 17 have received a first or a single dose. We have and are actively hiring pediatric vaccine peer ambassadors, so similar to the other value community ambassadors that we have. We are hiring adolescents who can support this work as well and spread the word about the importance of vaccinations. So we knew we'd have to work to overcome vaccine hesitancy or deliberation. And I think, you know, we have to start by asking the questions around the root cause of vaccine hesitancy. And we know that that is different for every community, and there is not necessarily a one-size-fits-all model. And so we developed the Value Communities Strategy, which I'll talk a bit about more in the future in upcoming slides. But this is really a strategy that has identified 10 potentially high need or high-risk communities that we wanted to provide additional support and much more focused and targeted outreach around the importance of vaccination, answering any questions. As a part of that, we've hired value peer ambassadors, and we've also hosted webinar series to really get the word out. We also recognize the importance of social media and spreading accurate information. And so we have a very robust mass media campaign that focuses on multiple outlets of providing this information. This includes social media, it includes billboards, text messages. We're about to launch another text messaging campaign, radio, and TV ads. Again, our value communities have held many focus groups, and through those focus groups, we developed more specific communication based on what that particular community is expressing. We also provide training and educational materials to those in the community who want to serve as trusted messengers. We also communicate frequently with our primary care providers throughout the community who we know are also a very important messenger. who we know are also a very important messenger. So very quickly, breaking down our value communities. We have our African-American community, our faith community, our older adults, our pediatrics, our young men, immigrants and Latinx population, our Orthodox Jewish community, pregnant or lactating individuals, individuals experiencing homelessness, and our disability communities. I am going to spend the next couple of slides highlighting just a few of these communities and some of the work that's been done to date to support this. And I think that this work is truly illustrative of the fact that it's Baltimore versus COVID. Again, all of this work is made possible by our numerous partners. So starting with our vaccine peer ambassadors, because I've mentioned them a few times. So these are individuals in the community that we're working with to spread the message. They're essentially that neighbor or that friend that can tell you about, tell you about the vaccine. They've received training that includes vaccine science, as well as how to outreach individuals and meet them where they are around providing answers to their questions about the vaccine, as well as sharing any upcoming vaccination events. We have, we are in the process of interviewing youth ambassadors, but I do want to plug that we're looking to hire youth ambassadors. So for folks who are interested, I'm happy to provide that information as well. To date, we've had over 10,000 conversations or interactions with community members. Over 192,000 printed materials have been disseminated. This includes sheets around frequently asked questions, the toolkit I mentioned that you can provide training and walkthrough information on the vaccine, value brochures that talk about the work of our value ambassadors, and clinic flyers. So again, in order to have those one-on-one conversations and reach every corner of the city, we've really employed this tiered neighborhood canvassing approach, with tier one really focusing on the general population down to tier three, which is specific to the value communities. So this includes tabling, this includes one-on-one conversations that our value leads are having. This includes Q and A, this includes webinars that are advertised to groups that we know are supported by our value communities. Again, I can't thank the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, many of our elected officials, the Neighborhood Association, and other community organizations that have helped with weekly canvassing efforts and enable us to provide this information to city residents. This is just a quick snapshot of the self-guided toolkit for individuals and organizations that are engaging in our neighborhood canvassing. So through this toolkit, we can empower residents to engage the community and get the word out on the importance of COVID-19 vaccines. So this toolkit provides training on vaccine science, talks about the clinical trials, it talks about how to address the myths about vaccine, and also provides resources on how to book an appointment for a community member, as well as allows value ambassadors to distribute materials to community members. So now to quickly highlight the work of our, a few of our value communities, starting with our residents who are experiencing homelessness. So again, this is inclusive not just of those residents, but also of individuals who are supporting them through staff or group home settings, individuals in substance use disorder. So we've vaccinated at treatment centers, clients who are at pharmacists centers, or residents who are temporarily sheltered within hotels. So we've collaborated with partners to bring vaccines to our encampment sites, as well as the Lord Baltimore, where we have individuals who are experiencing homelessness and have co-located some of our clinics with substance use, with our substance use disorder treatment van. To date, we've had about 185 health department-involved clinics with over 4,500 vaccines administered. And again, want to thank our partners in this work, Healthcare for the Homeless, Life Bridge, St. Agnes, FEMA, and the National Guard. Next, I want to talk about our African-American value community. So we know that there are historical and present-day truths that contribute to distrust around vaccinations, specifically in this community. So we're working, again, to meet this community where they are, partnering with local trusted influencers within the community. One example of that is our Shots at Shops program. So we have barbers and beauticians that have already been trained through a program at the University of Maryland Center for Health Equity. And they'll be setting up vaccination clinics within their shops via this Shots at Shops program. We're also coordinating vaccination outreach with existing events. So AFRAAM and Black Heritage Month, which will be happening this week and next. We're partnering with Morgan State, who has provided massive support around our focus grouping. We're working with the Black Mental Health Alliance on a knowledge awareness and practice study that really is conducting focus groups and studies of individuals who are unvaccinated to understand their hesitation and their readiness to get vaccination. And again, this helps inform our messaging. Also partnering with Coppin State, they're coordinating recurrent vaccination clinics beginning next month. And then we're partnering with Park West, a federally qualified health center. Our, both our Latinx value lead and our African-American value lead will be working with them to begin those recurring clinics. Other organizations, Omega Psi Phi, a Black Greek Fraternity, the NAACP, Communities United, No Boundaries Coalition, and Organizing Black, they have helped support canvassing outreach, hosting vaccination clinics, as well as webinars. The third value community that I want to highlight is our Orthodox Jewish community. We have contracted with the Associated Jewish Federation to serve as the value lead for this community. And our lead has worked with Chair Schleifer, as well as Rebecca Mark of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhoods, and outreach to the community. They've utilized mediums such as baltimorejewishlife.com and Orthodox Jewish Print Publications to get messaging out. We've supported tables at existing community events to provide educational materials on upcoming vaccination clinics, as well as handing out swag to people who proudly claim to be vaccinated. We've also supported events at pop-up stores, hosted at synagogues, as well as a shopping bazaar of a local home-based vendor. We're working with two of the three Jewish school food distribution lines weekly and handing out educational materials there. Again, I've mentioned one of our partners, Chor Shalom. One of our ambassadors is actually the clinic director. And she also proudly hands out Health Department information to people asking questions. And we will have, we actually started recurring clinics in this, and to support this community as well. Seven Mile Market, that started on August 11th, and the next one is scheduled for September 1st. And then will resume in October. So I did want to share this brief video of rabbis encouraging vaccination. So this video, again, was done in partnership with the Associated, with Chor Shalom and the Health Department. I understand there's no audio. Um, hmm, I do not know how to fix that.
You can send the committee a link with the responses to the other questions.
Okay, perfect. Will do. Well, again, I'm proud of the video. I'm proud of the work of our partners. It now has actually over 5,500 views since it was released 10:30 PM on Saturday night, August 7th. So I'm very excited about this campaign as a part of our larger overall campaign. So the last value community that I want to highlight is our pediatrics group. So working with clinical partners, to date, we've offered 43 different clinics at school sites or sponsored by schools with a total of 1,233 first doses administered and 796 second doses administered. We'll ultimately establish 10 to 15 recurring school-based sites, with about six of them already being up and running. Our immunization program also was recently awarded a two-year grant from the Office of Minority Health within Health and Human Services, awarded that last month, that will allow us to partner with community organizations to increase COVID-19 vaccine among Baltimore City youth by increasing health literacy among this population. So our aim is really to work with youth, work with parents and caregivers, and ensure that they're adept at seeking health information and engaging in just a larger dialogue with their healthcare provider focused on vaccinations, but also other issues that we know contribute to health disparities. And then lastly, in addition to much of the work being done by our value communities, I want to recognize our community partners that have received micro grants because they're also very critical to the city's vaccination efforts. So we've partnered with Civic Works, who is providing funding for these community-based organizations to conduct vaccination clinics and outreach. Thus far, they've provided 13 awards, or actually 12 awards, with a total of $102,000, a little over $102,000 being given away so far. And that concludes my slides.
Thank you very much. You can take down the presentation. Okay, back to questions. The first thing, on the slide of Grant Money, it lists off 12 organizations that have received micro grants, mostly in the neighborhood of $10,000. What is the use of that grant? What are they supposed to be doing?
So they can, again, plan a vaccination event in their community or also provide outreach around a vaccination, an upcoming vaccination event.
Okay, just so you're aware, I did a search of each one of those organizations today. I pulled up their social media page, Facebook. I know you guys have done an excellent job of using your social media, so props to your social media team for that. It's also free. I mean, posting on social media doesn't cost any money. And so in looking at these 12 organizations on Facebook, I found that at least half of them haven't had a single post regarding COVID vaccines in at least three months, some of them not at all. And so is that, I mean, is that acceptable to you that they took grant money for this, for this purpose and aren't using their mediums to actually promote vaccines or vaccine clinics or the messaging that you guys are putting out?
Yeah, so I think one thing to note is that outreach is much more than social media, right? We talked a lot about our preparation and our canvassing events ahead of time. And certainly, a lot of the folks that we're trying to reach might not necessarily use social media as their primary mode of communication. And so, again, many of these groups are on the ground, doing neighborhood canvassing. Civic Works actually runs the RFP process. And, you know, we, again, understand there are various modalities of outreach. The application is available online if you'd like to review it.
The other question I have is, you mentioned about the importance of these neighborhood clinics. So can you just elaborate a little bit on how you're supporting these neighborhood clinics? The example, there's one example you keep giving of the one in my district, the one I'm involved in, which I helped start. And as from your presentation, information provided actually has done 20, 25% of the homebound vaccines, and based on the numbers that have been provided of community-based clinics, actually accounts for over 20% of the total vaccines that have been done in the city in the past few months from those partners. So how, how is the Health Department currently supporting these clinics? And how do they intend to further support the clinics that are getting the most work done?
Yeah, so I think I've mentioned that part of our work is in that canvassing and outreach. And so the Health Department, I will say, by nature, even pre-pandemic, does not have a ton of clinical providers. Many of the clinical providers that we have work directly in our clinics. And so our clinicians within the department, there are not a lot of us. And so we knew from the beginning, we would have to rely and work with external partners for that clinical expertise and ability to administer vaccines, as it does require clinical background. So a lot of our work is in that canvassing and outreach, right? It's the community health workers, it's those that are in the neighborhood, spreading the word, providing education, providing training to, again, peer ambassadors who might be spreading the word as well.
Gotcha, because also in the presentation, it was talking about like district elected officials. I can only speak for myself because, you know, I've been very focused on working within this topic in my district. And with all the hours I've spent, we've, my efforts directly has helped over 1,000 people get appointments when those appointments were canceled originally in February. And now this clinic is close to, is going to approach 7,000 vaccines. And so what does this outreach look like? Because I haven't, you know, I haven't personally received that level of outreach. I've definitely done outreach to the Health Department requesting information and assistance to help increase my efforts, but I haven't exactly received that level of partnership or joint messaging. And I'm where the rubber meets the road. I am helping people every single day overcome whatever it is that their hesitancy is. A gentleman last night came to the clinic. I've probably spoken to him on no less than 100 times about why he should be getting a vaccine and why in somebody in his health and, you know, he certainly needs to receive a vaccine. And he finally came last night to get his first, his first dose. And so, you know, I see what these hesitancies are. I've expressed those, but I haven't actually received the outreach back. And I'll just give a couple examples. One thing I hear all the time is, and we see from the prior COVID numbers, that, you know, people who said they had COVID, they're not interested in a vaccine. I brought this up at the last hearing when I asked you about whether or not people who had COVID should get vaccinated, and you said they should. And then the other thing that I've heard quite often is from women who say that they believe it's going to prevent them from getting pregnant. And so I'm sure you've heard both of those concerns as well. I mean, that's something that, you know, I've reached out to on partnership, partnering to get messaging out there on these topics. I haven't received that outreach. So I'm just wondering, like, what can we do moving forward to get that outreach going and to partner to actually address these concerns that people who are willing, who want to get vaccinated but have these hesitancies, what can we do to partner to get, to get them over that hurdle and to get them the correct information and messaging to get them to come to the clinic?
Yeah, well, first, thank you for all of your outreach and your work in your community. I'll first start by saying that, again, we work to meet people where they are. And overcoming hesitancy for some individuals takes time. It takes that information, it takes that trusted partner. We work directly with Laura as our value community's lead, and Dina from Chor Shalom, who I believe worked directly with you and your community. Additionally, we bring vaccine and peer ambassadors to the community. Can you guys still hear me?
Yeah, we can hear.
Okay, sorry. Something happened to my earphones. So again, we have worked specifically with our value communities lead, Laura and Dina, who I believe work in your district.
Yeah, Dina was the first volunteer who helped with these efforts. And I know she recently, in the past few weeks, started, you know, connecting with Laura and those efforts. But I'm specifically talking, in your slide, it talks about the district elected officials. And so, you know, I did see that video that was put out, and that's great. I don't know everybody's name who's on that video, nor are a lot of them from my district. But, you know, when you talk about elected officials as the voice, voices of the district, validators, who people rely on for information, my question is about how we can partner, how you and I can partner, how myself, my office, and the Health Department can partner, because we're so active on this topic and because we're so willing to, we just don't feel like we're having the support. And so that was my question, not about, you know, a couple people who are doing different outreach or handing out flyers. Obviously, our efforts are working, our numbers are through the roof. And certainly, I think those best practices, I would love to see spread throughout the entire city. I know a lot of these homebound vaccines that we did were from outside my district. You know, I was involved in a lot of the logistics on that, a lot of them were in the sixth district as well. But my question is involving how we can partner and how we can do joint messaging to do that outreach and how we can get that same, on the same page and have that information to be able to communicate to people where they are.
Great, thank you. Now, we can absolutely partner with you around neighborhood canvassing. I know we've worked, so some of the districts we've worked with, or some of the council folks we've worked with, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Costello, and Councilman Burnett. Happy to work with you and your team as well around that.
Okay. Any other colleagues have questions before I keep going? Go ahead, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you. Just in the same vein of what you're asking, again, I think social media is totally awesome, and I'm so, so, so happy. They're actually engaging people from around the world, actually, which is great. But again, to the same line of questioning that my colleagues... But again, to the same line of questioning that my colleague, Mr. Chair was talking about is, you know, information about, you know, how do we, when we get questions about, you know, the vaccine, making sure that we have the right information. I think, you know, early on in the crisis, we were getting weekly emails from your staff on, you know, various messaging, what's going on, et cetera, et cetera. Either I missed it, or maybe one of my other colleagues is getting it. But it would be, those would be really great information to have back to us, because a lot of us, you know, are working very hard in our districts to get people vaccinated. So we want to be able to have that information. So if we can go back to sort of that, you know, operations center, you know, you know, that would be, that would be great.
So absolutely, we can communicate with you. The JIC, the Joint Information Center, who I think was putting out a lot of that information, is not up and running at this point. So we really are doing a lot of the external communication just from the Health Department, but happy to put something together for, for council members.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Chair, if we can have the Mayor's Office answer myself and my colleagues' initial question on the vaccine mandate piece. Is Nina around to answer?
Hi, good, Nina.
Thanks. Yeah, the answer that we provided this morning is the same answer that I can provide you today. We will follow up with you as soon as decisions are made. I know that those conversations are still ongoing.
Okay, I think some of us are also listening to the governor. The governor just announced he's doing mandates in nursing home facilities for employees. So we're starting, I think, to get into that, that direction. So thanks. That's it for now. Thanks a lot, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, does your team have any plans to directly target the neighborhoods that had high, you know, that had high COVID positivity rates with some new messaging about the fact that people who had COVID should still be getting vaccines?
So we definitely interweave the necessity for vaccination, even if you've had COVID. Do a lot of our messaging, as we've also been interweaving the importance of testing. For some time, we had seen a decline in testing. We're seeing it start to pick back up now. But that's been interweaved throughout our communication and is one of our value community talking points currently.
Okay, I haven't seen any information on that. So if, if your team can provide some messaging and advertising around that, that'd be great to see.
Yep, absolutely. We can get you that in the toolkit as well.
Can you talk about the mobile clinics that are out there? How many are out there, and how many days a week they are going to communities?
Yep, it's about 20 to 25 per week. The schedule's posted weekly on our website, and they're generally Monday through, Monday through Sunday, actually. So we have them almost every day of the week.
And I'm just reading through these questions that were asked from other colleagues. What are the projected vaccine distribution statistics? And is the city projected to reach a vaccine? When is the city projected to reach a percentage needed for herd immunity?
Yeah, so I think, two things. I think it's a complex question when we think about our ability to truly reach herd immunity, given how widespread the virus is now with the Delta variant. So that's, I think, a broader question. We set the benchmark of 80% of the total population, inclusive of children. Some of us reaching that is also dependent on the timeframe for which vaccinations will be approved for children under 12. So that is obviously a pretty significant portion of our population, and we want to make sure that they're also included in that, that larger value. So I think some of that will be dictated by the timeframe in which vaccines are approved for that group, which we anticipate to be late fall, early winter, fingers crossed.
Okay, and is, are vaccines from the state still coming directly to you guys? Or are they going directly to partners?
So we still get vaccines. It is, it depends. So it depends on the particular type of event, we get vaccines. But our partners also receive vaccines. It depends on the nature of the partner. So in instances, you know, our clinical partners have the ability to receive vaccines, but other partners that maybe aren't clinical might not have that ability. And so we would receive the vaccine on their behalf.
Any other colleagues with questions? Just checking in again. Okay, I'm closing in on, I'm not going to go through every single one of these questions, because I think you touched on a lot of the different topics that were on this list. Just getting back to a question I asked in the beginning. As an independently elected member of the city council, how soon can my request be honored to get a briefing about my specific district and the neighborhoods in my district, as is done citywide for the mayor?
Sure, sure. So I think, you know, please reach out to DePaul, our Legislative Director, and we'll try to get you scheduled as soon as the schedule allows.
Okay, if he can provide dates for me, because I've called this phone 20 times in the past two days, and it goes straight to voicemail. Councilwoman Ramos, do you have any, any further questions before we close out?
But I'll request the same briefing as well. So, so thank you for that. No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Richard, can, Councilman Costello, you have a question? Richard, can we go through those who are logged in? I know some of them are city employees, but can you just check to see if there's any public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First name we have is Gary Sheridan.
Thank you. Thank you for the leadership. And thank you for the way you've led, and you've done that through partnership. And so we in the hospital industry appreciate that partnership. And I think today represents just the latest example of what that partnership means. When you think about the responsibilities that we in the hospital industry have, very specifically, we hold ourselves to the highest standards when it comes to the safety and well-being of our patients, of our team members, of our communities. And so it's for that reason, understanding the science and the data of this, of this virus, and understanding that the vaccines represent the single most effective tool we have in the arsenal to actually drive us forward and deal with the challenges associated with this pandemic. Then now in June, we at the University of Maryland Medical System in partnership with the other academic health system in the state of Maryland, Johns Hopkins, that we together took the step of requiring vaccination for our workforce. We did so, again, understanding that we have this responsibility that comes with the social compact that is healthcare. As a hospital industry, we have demonstrated time and time again how we hold ourselves to the highest standard. And when we think about those standards, we think about the patients and their families who come to us seeking care, and they have an expectation that we've done everything within our power to limit the risk and ensure that we are doing everything we can do to deliver patients back to their families in good health. So as the CEO of the medical system at the University of Maryland Medical System, I have a lot of responsibilities, none more solemn than the responsibility I have to our patients, to our team members, and to our communities to keep them safe. And so this decision, understanding the science and the data, the impact, the safety associated with vaccines, and the dramatic impact vaccines have on decreasing the risk of hospitalization and death associated with COVID-19, this is a decision that we at the system came to willingly. I think today, the mandate that you have put forward to the entire hospital industry and to the healthcare industry overall, I think is another step that takes us as the state of Maryland forward and demonstrates once again that we are indeed national leaders in the fight against COVID-19. And so on behalf of the entire healthcare industry, the hospital industry, thank you for your continued support, and we look forward to continued partnership. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ha.
Mr. Chair, they probably should have been.
Hogan for the actions that he's taken today, which are also important. I'm here today to, to provide some important updates also on monoclonal antibody therapy, as the governor has highlighted. Monoclonal antibody therapy is the only approved effective therapy for symptomatic COVID-19 patients who are not yet hospitalized. But the, the uses for that have now been extended. And we're excited to share that the indications for this therapy have recently been expanded to include those who are unvaccinated and/or those.
This is, we're hearing the governor's press conference through Mr. Sheridan's.
Who have been exposed to COVID.
Richard, can you, can you?
Prevent them from getting COVID. This is a much different kind of indication than what we've had before, which was only.
Thanks. And can you go on to the next, next one? Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Okay. Jennifer Martin, Jennifer Martin.
Deputy Commissioner Martin is with the Health Department.
Okay. Kylie Eastman.
Awesome.
Kelly Eastman is also with the Health Department.
Matt Wilson. Matt Wilson. Got no response. Sally Baker. Sally Baker.
Ladies with my office.
Okay. And what, and last name I see is Kimmy Sowell, who I think is with Councilman Dorsey. Let's check.
Did we do, did we do Matt Wilson?
Let me try again.
I was in my office.
Okay, good. Good job, everybody, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, my colleagues are stacking the attendee list. All right, thank you. All right, so we can close out. Health Commissioner, I want to thank you for your time today and the work that you and your team have done to date. I'll be honest, I'm a little surprised and disappointed that, you know, we're satisfied with where we are on this vaccine rollout. I thought that, I think the citizens of Baltimore, and from what I'm hearing, aren't really satisfied with our numbers lagging so far behind. They fear for their and their family's safety, and they want to see the day that we reach herd immunity. And as I've said prior, I'm happy to partner, but I frankly don't feel like I've received enough support and communication from the department, which I hope will improve after today. So thank you, everyone, for your time. And Richard, we can close out the hearing.
Thank you.